Call the meeting to order, let the record show that this is a regular city council meeting held on June 15th. All members of council are present with the exception of Dottie Hershey. The press has been duly notified and it is also part of a public hearing with the Planning Commission. So after we do the call to order and the pledge of allegiance, moment of silence, I will turn it over to the Planning Commission. Would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence and I ask in your prayer today to remember Dick Peterson who passed away on Saturday evening. Dick was the founding member of the Tugak Veterans Association and a very big part of this community. So please remember Dick and his wife Joy in your prayer. Item number one on the agenda is a public hearing and I'm going to turn it over to Tom, we're chairman of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the Planning Commission, just for the record, we do have a quorum. We are missing Doug Burns and Bob Cullen currently. And with this, Susan, you'll give us the rezoning and kind of what our purpose is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant's proposing to rezone approximately 13.716 acres that's adjacent to Cameron Creek development and annex the parcel into the city as a residential patio home project. The site's located at the terminus of an existing private road, Stone Villas Drive. It's bounded to the east by the villages at Palmetto Town Homes and Palmetto Place Apartments, to the west by Palmetto Plantation, and to the south by Cameron Creek, and to the north by the commercial properties adjacent to Gold Hill. The applicant's proposing that the development will be age-targeted to those residents transitioning from standard single-family detached dwellings to a smaller footprint. The total density proposed for the annexation and rezoning will be approximately 45 patio homes. Staff has identified the current deficiency in our inventory for housing choice for an aging population, and age-targeted patio home product would help to reduce that deficiency. Therefore, staff believes that the rezoning is appropriate because, one, the age-targeted patio home product would meet a major goal of the housing element of the 2015-2025 comprehensive plan, which is the promotion of housing choice by the provision of a diversity of housing stock. And two, the site is located in an area that is transitioning from commercial to traditional single-family, and the proposed patio homes will provide a bridge between those uses. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to the applicant for a brief presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, also Mr. Chair of the Planning Commission, members of the Commission as well as members of the council. My name is Brian Ignema. I am with Essex Homes and the applicant for this rezoning annexation. In attendance with myself this evening is Matt Levek from ESP Associates. He is our engineer of record. He will also be discussing some of the technical aspects of this rezoning this evening. I wanted to start us off if we could, thank you Charlie, I think it's important for you folks to know who the applicant is. As I mentioned, I am with Essex Homes. We are a South Carolina home building-based company. We roughly build about 700 homes a year between two markets, Columbia, South Carolina where we are headquartered, as well as the Charlotte market where most of our business is, and York County and Lancaster County. Together, we will, as I mentioned, between those two different operations, build roughly about 700 homes. We are known as a luxury home builder. We started as a custom home builder about 19, 20 years ago. We were owned by one person, it's a family-owned business, and we haven't lost our heritage of where we started. We're not a large public company, as I mentioned at the Planning Commission meeting. Every land opportunity in every neighborhood is important to us. We can't afford to make a mistake, like a lot of larger public builders, so when we go out and we seek a land opportunity, we make sure we execute as flawlessly as we possibly can and complete that project. We like this location for a lot. We were in front of you a few years ago for a different product, for a host of different reasons and issues, time running out on us, product not being approved, et cetera. We are back, meeting with you folks, to talk about this opportunity, which is to rezone the property to a patio home district, which we think is very conducive for the property. One of the questions that came up at the Planning Commission meeting was, have you met with the homeowners association that you'll be driving through to have entrance to your property? In fact, we did. We met the day after, that was a quest by Mr. DeNoso. I did have an opportunity to meet with Corinne Marcello, she's actually in attendance tonight, and the consensus of that conversation, and if Ms. Marcello would like to speak to that, was it was a lot more palatable of what we're presenting. We believe that the patio home neighborhood, as I'll get into in a little bit about some of the benefits of the neighborhood, has drastically less impact on traffic, has drastically less impact on schools, and has drastically less impact on public services and resources. But I'm going to turn it over to Matt to kind of walk through some of the technical aspects, why we're seeking this rezoning, and answer any questions certainly thereafter.
Good evening, I'm Matt Levek with ESP Associates and 3475 Lake Mount Boulevard in Fort Mill. And what we have up now is a location map, and I feel like this is a helpful map because it really helps you understand the current city limits of Tugak and this, a project's location to it. As you can see, it's right on the northern end. It's a piece that is one parcel away pretty much from the Gold Hill Road, so it gets you up in that Gold Hill 160 corridor a little further, and very compatible with the use with the surrounding environment as well, and helping stay consistent with the city limits and the Tugak values as well. This is the aerial of the property, and you can see the project there, the villages at Palmetto in front of it, as well as the site behind it. It's almost entirely wooded currently. There are some, there is some steep topography on the site, going down to a creek towards the back, towards the western portion. So what we would be looking to do is keep, propose to keep the development up towards the top of the slope as well, and get access off the current road there, as mentioned previously. And then try to preserve a lot of the trees and everything down along the stream area, and helping with the stream buffers and keeping some water quality down in the low areas as well. The project itself, we're looking at up to 45 patio homes on the site, and what is typical with this community is that each home is beautifully landscaped and maintained as part of the HOA, so in terms of the landscaping. So the landscaping is all, will be, proposed to be consistent, and what that really does is it helps to know that the look and the feel of the neighborhood will stay consistent throughout, which is a nice benefit to the community. And helps with this, the targeted buyer, that's really what they've seen has helped sell it, is that maintenance-free living. That's the goal here, as well as some of the amenities and the park-like atmosphere of what they're looking to do here, with some trails down along the, some of the low areas of the community as well, trying to be consistent with what Tugak really looks for in communities with some of the trails and amenities. Now, 45 homes, and it's limited in how much you can do, but they're looking for maybe some gazebos, some park-like areas for gatherings and everything. The next slide is just a quick sketch idea on the site of a potential network through it, just wanted to give everyone a feel of what it may potentially look like, and then just something that we'll be working through further as we're going into the process through the development amenities. So you can see just access off of the private road through the neighborhood, and then probably looking at one or two roads within the community. Now, the architecture, this is a, just a general idea of some of the product samples to help give you a look and feel, and Brian, I don't know if you want to talk about a specific product.
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
As you noticed here, it's a mix of architectural elements. You have board and bat, board and bat and siding. We will also be incorporating stone and/or brick, if so chosen by buyer, buyer, but it's always our goal to make sure that the product looks different on every lot. We're not going to simply come in and do very two-dimensional elevations where everything looks the same. We have corporate restrictions that do not allow us to build the same home on either side or directly across the street. We will offer at a minimum four different floor plans, which consist of roughly 12 to 16 different elevations, and if we're looking between 40 and 45 home sites, there's a pretty good, there's a pretty good streetscape that will be developed with 12 to 16 different elevations on roughly 40 to 45 home sites. So, a nice-looking product. The product will range anywhere in the mid-teens to the mid-twos if not higher. You'll notice that this is all a one-story and/or one-and-a-half-story for those folks that like most that are living being on the first floor, but need some flexibility for children, grandchildren to visit, they have an upstairs option to utilize that, what I refer to as flex space, whether it's for, you know, a stay-at-home office, if it's a exercise room, or just a place for the grandkids to sleep over. So, everything is obviously a front-entry garage. As Matt mentioned, this is a very difficult site with a topography, hence the reason why we need to keep most of the development towards the top part, the higher part of the neighborhood, and resulting in a front-entry garage. Price points always come up, and, you know, we are resting behind a townhome neighborhood that is currently selling in the low 100s, 105 to 110 range, and we anticipate our settlement price being 100% of that number well into the $200,000 price point. So, we feel it's, we feel it's an absolute area for a good transition with apartments, with townhomes in the front, residential behind us, and really I think will fill in the void in this area. This piece has been out there for a very, very long time, and I feel like it'll be able to bring everything together in this pocket of the world. Last thing I meant, that I mentioned previously, is why this product, why this demographic. Candidly speaking, it is very well-needed in all over the United States. 65% of the buyers, you can read the stat on the National Home Builder Association website, will be of an age of 55 or older, and our marketplace especially, you have your anchor neighborhoods in Sun City, your resales at Four Seasons, and other smaller neighborhoods, but there is such a lack of this inventory in the market. South Carolina, Tugak, et cetera, is certainly a great place for it because of certain tax exemptions for folks of this, of this demographic. So, we believe it's the right use of the property, and hopefully with your support, we'll be able to move ahead. More than glad to answer any questions at this time.
Susan, anything else from your standpoint before we open up for questions? Okay. Then I'll turn to council, any questions from council at this time?
I just have one. Can you go back to that price point again? I was writing something else down and I lost the numbers.
That was my question, too.
Yeah. What is the price point again?
We anticipate that the homes between the base pricing, then you're going to add options to it, low to mid-200s.
And the lot size? Lot sizes?
The lot size will be varying anywhere from 40-some feet to 50-some feet. This demographic does not want yard maintenance. So, and when you have a, when you have a footprint of roughly between 30 and 40 feet wide, it's a pretty deep product. And with that, we're going to have, obviously have a good amount of green space here, but with an HOA-maintained neighborhood, we have to try minimizing the amount of yard work, number one, that these folks do not want, and number two, trying to find the balance between giving them a nice yard, but not having their dues so high that they can't, can't live in this neighborhood, especially when we are discussing upwards to 45 home sites.
They share the backyards, or?
No. This is, to be simple, absolute, everybody owns their own property, but the HOA would maintain everybody's yard.
And all the garages would be two-car?
All the garages would be two-car if it is a 40-foot wide home footprint. If it is smaller than that, it becomes very, very difficult to do a two-car garage. We would like the flexibility on some of these smaller home sites to do at least a one-car garage.
Okay. And, I mean, I believe that patio homes are our needed product in our community, and that you're targeting active adults to lessen the burden on traffic as well as the school system. However, you're allowing up to a four-bedroom product, which concerns me. What percent of that 40 to 45 homes would be permissible to be a four-bedroom?
You cannot accommodate a four-bedroom home on a home site that is 40 feet or less. If you did, you would have bedrooms that wouldn't even be classified as bedrooms because it would be absolutely so small that appraisers would not recognize those as a bedroom itself. Our take rate, what we look at internally, on four-bedroom patio homes of this square footage, is typically less than 15% for four bedrooms. And it's not even a four-bedroom, that space that I'm talking about upstairs is a flex space. Someone could use it as a bedroom, but our buyers typically do not. I had mentioned that you can use it for an exercise room, a home office, or it's a place where the grandkids sleep over. But this demographic wants, they're living on one floor. So our take rate on that second story, or that bonus space upstairs, especially when we're dealing in square footage in the mid-teens, is a very low take rate.
And when would your target construction date be?
If we were, had all of our approvals and CD's done, construction drawings done, actually breaking ground, I would like to be optimistic and think that we would actually be breaking ground very end of this year.
And it would be a two- or three-year?
The developments, the actual development itself would all take place in one phase. We would not phase the development, and with 40-some home sites, we anticipate roughly about a 24-month start to finish on the home, on the home sales and construction.
I appreciate you updating this to include the natural, undisturbed, open space areas. However, I do not see a definition on this of what that would be, and I really wanted to make sure that meant you could not cut any of those trees down. So, for the point of clarity, unless I'm missing it, we would need a definition on here, otherwise it wouldn't matter if you had that term listed.
If I may address that for you, Jennifer, we have a definition in our zoning code for natural, undisturbed, open space.
Okay.
And so, that's, that's the definition that this goes by on this concept plan. It's the same universal language. And also to address your question, Chris's question about backyards, a patio home by its definition has a shared patio wall. The backyards are independent of each other. They just have a shared patio wall.
Okay, so Susan, that means that no trees will be cut according to definition, because I don't have a definition.
And in a natural, undisturbed, open space, nothing is to be touched.
Okay.
Except for sidewalks or trails are utility easements. So when you've got to put in a water and sewer, you're going to have to do some, and on their plans, that would be addressed. Okay?
And not to say that they would breach that, but mistakes happen. What happens if a company were to do that, even if it was the logging company?
Then, because this also has streams in which there will be environmental considerations, there would be fines that would be accessed, and there would be mitigation that would have to occur. I think we've learned our lesson, and I think this is, this would be something that we'd be very diligent in.
I think this is something we're witnessing across the street from the school right now, so I think the fines would be assessed, and Army Corps of Engineers would be involved in it if that was the case. Any other questions, council?
I just thank you, Brian, for sticking with us for almost two years and nice quality.
Hold on there, Greg. I've got one other question. Are you concluding, you done the other question? Where's your access point?
The access point, Matt can refer to it on the, we'll do it up here.
Okay, it's the, it's the Stone Villas Drive.
160. TD Bank.
Right at the end of Stone Villas Drive is where this property is. So that is...
I got it.
That's the only access to the property. Cameron Creek is now developing to the south, so it's fully, it's literally an indoor development in one sense or another, because it's a fully developed around.
Yeah.
Any other questions, council? I'm sorry. Any other questions, council? I'll turn it back to you, Tom.
Okay. Any questions from Planning Commission? Okay.
I have just one last question.
Yes, sir.
Is there is any chance that you have an other exit other than the only one that already exists?
We would love to have a second answer, and we have had numerous conversations with MI Homes who has the Cameron Creek neighborhood next door. They are too far along in their process. They have homes exactly where we would have, what we're hoping, the ability to tie into that, to that road. So we've exhausted that conversation with them numerous times, and each time it was thank you, but no thank you.
Yeah, because that exit is a challenge. I did it today. And the challenge that I see is that it's not even flat. You're going all the way up, and then you have to get, if you are brave, well, you have to brave just to the right. You cannot go anyplace else.
Were you coming out of the, because I, the neighborhood next door where the apartments are at, that is a pretty steep incline, coming out of the neighborhood. Were you coming out of that entrance, or were you coming out of the stone, the villas here? Because that, those are very differing degrees of exiting those neighborhoods. I agree that there's the apartment complex, and it has a very steep incline to exit, but where we're exiting from, it's pretty flat. I mean, it really is, but the entrance next door, which we have no access to, and would not be utilizing that entrance or exit, is actually very steep. But where we're, where we're going to be ingress, egress, is pretty flat.
Okay. Any other questions from Planning Commission? Okay, at this point then, we'll open it up for any public comments, if you'll come to the microphone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address and your comments, please. There being none, we will close the public hearing, and Mr. Mayor, we'll hand it back over to you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Item number one B on the agenda is the public hearing in regards to the amendment to the fiscal year 2014 Tugak Utility Department budget. That's TCUD.
One.
One, or, yeah.
Correct.
City Council, Charlie Fundberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public. Per our contract agreements with the town of Fort Mill and the city of Rock Hill, they have provided appropriate notification to the city of rate increases. Fort Mill's rate increase is a pass-through of an increase that they are getting on water purchase from the city of Rock Hill. The sewer increase will be coming directly from Rock Hill to us. All of those rate increases are scheduled to go into effect next month, July. The proposed rate increases for us are to pass that rate increase along. It's just passing through the rate increase that we're experiencing, as we have done in the past. This only affects the customers on TCUD 1, which are the Lake Shore, Lake Ridge, Serenity Point, Stonecrest, Cameron Creek. Eventually, if this development that was just discussed at the prior public hearing goes through those areas. So, it would take your, the water usage fee for TCUD 1, where we're currently charging $4.52 per thousand gallons, would take it to $4.57 per thousand, and on sewer, it would go to $4.79 per thousand gallons. Again, Rock Hill is passing through these rates, both Fort Mill and us. Their fiscal year is July 1, so that's why it would be going into effect in July instead of October. Currently, staff does not see, as we've been reviewing budgets for the upcoming fiscal year, as we sit here today, do not envision having to do yet, you know, an additional rate increase with the October 1 budget. This would be the rate increase, but instead of more or less eating that increase from now to October 1, looking to try to put it into effect as Rock Hill does. With that, I'll take questions.
Are there any public comments?
What is their increase, again?
Rock Hill, basically what you're looking at is a 1% on water and a 6% on sewer.
Which is what has been published in the Herald.
Yeah, they ran an article, I think, last week, and I think they're going up on electric rates as well. So, yeah.
For a monthly increase, or for the year?
Right now, the letter, or the notification that we received was, that was the increase for the 15, 16 fiscal year, and it's a per-thousand-gallon increase.
So we're taking maybe $5 per customer if that, if it went up? There an average of...
Give or take. Yeah, you're not talking, I mean, yeah, the water rate's going up by a nickel, a nickel per thousand gallons.
For the year, I'm saying no.
Yeah, it's, for the year, I haven't run, run the numbers yet, but it's not an astronomical increase, no. They have also notified us that they are potentially looking at a 3% increase on both of those for the following fiscal year, 16, 17. I know with, on the sewer side, they're trying to increase the capacity at the treatment plant, which is a lot of what the expense is, or the increase is on the sewer end of things.
Right.
And on the water end, it's just more expensive doing business each year.
No public comments, closed public comments. We move on to item number two on the agenda is executive session. Council, I'll make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss contractual matters related to 2216 Gold Hill Road, and also incident to legal matters. Can I have a second on that motion? Second by Chris Lambic Larson. Any discussion? There being none, call the question, all in favor, single saying aye.
Aye.
We're in executive session. While in executive session, only the items on the agenda were discussed, no votes were taken, other than to return to open session. Before we go on to item number three, which is public comments, I'm going to make a motion that we table item number 6F, which is the purchase agreement of 2216 Gold Hill Road.
Second.
Second by Chris Lambic Larson. Any discussion? There being none, call the question, all in favor, single saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Excuse me, item number three on the agenda is public comments. Do we have the timer? We're good? First one on the agenda is Heidi. If you'd come up to the podium and state your address, and you have three minutes.
I'm Heidi Spitz. I live on 26006 Morningside Drive, down in the Daybreak condos, townhouses, and I have a big problem with the parking down there. They redone the whole road, and they remarked everything, and in front of my house, I used to be able to park. So, there was like two years ago when they paved it, and they put on their tow-away zone. So sometimes when I come home, I park there right in front of my house, and I had to pay already two towing expenses to get it put away. So anyway, I got a handicapped sticker about four weeks ago, and I took the association, my paperwork from the doctor over there, and they told me they have no place, no nothing for me, and so I parked my car right after the stripe. I bought pictures with me, and I leave them there with you, so you all can make, can make a decision on it. I think it's terrible. They run that whole association like it's on their thing. Everybody who's on the board, and everybody who was on the board, and I've been fighting over there, and I gave it up three years ago, and it's terrible. Everybody who was on the board has an extension out under the house, everything else. It's looking terrible. And I've been a real to here on Tugak since 78. I mean, it's just going down the hill. It's just awful, and I never complained. I was thinking, calling Ron, tell him about it, because I hate to be complaining about something, you know? I never had to fight with anyone. But in there, and I hadn't parked my car yesterday in front of my house again because my leg hurts very much, and, and wouldn't you know it, I bought another sticker, another metal thing, and he handled it right in front of him. The guy right next door to me, he's very awful, and he, and there says tow-away zone, so on, so.
Who's putting up the tow-way zone signs?
The association. They put the whole parking pact down there.
Where is, where is this?
The Daybreak of Snapper Point.
I thought the roads were public roads, because when, when, when they got built those buildings in 78, it belonged to Tugak.
Yeah.
And then when we became a city back in 82, then, I don't know, I don't think you all incorporated. you all incorporated in there with it. But I didn't wanna raise no nothing, but I bought my, my townhouse back in two oh three, yeah. And then I rented it out for two years. They then complained to me, I had to pay double the regime fee, and I said, no, I'm not gonna pay it until you show me you have all the votes for it. So, it went to court, well, I won that one. And then the guy next door to me, then he took me to court, because his water always came into my yard. So, anyway, that's a long story. He already lost two cases against me. And now, he just would like to run me off from there. He just said, why don't you move away? And it's, it's just awful. They're not very cooperative, you know? You're supposed to enjoy wherever you are.
Heidi, do you have, you bring everything to give to, uh, Charlie, so we can share it with us?
I have pictures here, yeah, and I, you know...
You mind lea, you mind leaving those with Charlie, cause he'll get, make sure we get them?
Yeah.
And I got one other question. Uh, since they, that, are there handicap markings down there at all?
No, none whatsoever. And he was...
Okay.
And I, and I read the, and I read what you have to have, you have to have a hundred feet to your car. And mine is a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty feet to my car, and I have to go up the hill. Um, so, you know, that's how, and I went down to City Hall and wanted to see, and I can't get nowhere. I can't get nowhere.
Would you give those pictures to Charlie?
Yeah, and then y'all can go over it. There is before, when I first bought my unit, and, and there always were out there, there always drew lines out there. It was, it's just awful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi.
No relation. You spell your name wrong.
Uh, seven, seven zero one Trail Ridge Drive, and our family just moved here three months ago from Iowa, and we love it here.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. I was wondering if anyone had already talked about either getting a safety rail, or maybe widening one side of the sidewalk from TK Elementary School to, um, Heritage Teeter, or the TK Children's Academy that's about ready to, um, open up this fall? And the reason that I ask that is because, um, I like to ride my bike to the grocery store, and, um, I can do it fine, but if I try to take, um, my kids, um, who are like the eight-year-old, or the six-year-old, or the three-year-old, it's just too busy, cause it's too close to the road, and there's too many cars. And then I have a couple other mothers that do the same thing, and they're the power moms that have like the five kids behind them, and they're going on a real bike ride, you know, down Gold Hill Road, and then they go on to the Smoothie King on, um, TK Drive, um, one sixty. And, um, it's just, I don't know if there's anything that can be done about it, because there's not a lot of space. But I was thinking maybe a safety rail, or my husband was thinking, actually, that was his idea. And then my idea was maybe just widening the sidewalk, if that's possible.
The problem we have is that that part of, um, TK Drive, Gold Hill, yeah, Gold Hill Road, is a state road.
Oh, okay.
So, it's a state issue. So, I would suggest you speak with, um, Representative Ralph Norman, um, or Senator Wes Hayes, and we have their phone numbers, if you need those, to get in touch with them.
Sure, why not?
I, I think I'll reach out to them as well.
Me also, I like to ride bikes, too.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
And, and, um, if there's no one else, I just wanted to say thank you so much for the intersection light, um, that has been recently put up in front of City Hall, because I felt that that was made for me. And I love the sign, I love the flag, I love the, um, crosswalk sign, and I love the lights, and it has a little, you know, how to use it. So, on behalf of all the mothers and the little kids, we like the intersection lights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? There being none, closed public comments. Item number four on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Uh, council, before you, are there your minutes from May eighteenth? Um, are there any questions or deletions to those minutes? Hearing none, those minutes stand approved. Item number five A on the agenda is the second reading of an ordinance, um, to amend Chapter twenty-six towing. City Manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, as, as the mayor stated, um, this is the second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter twenty-six of the city's code, uh, specifically in regards to towing. As council has already given favorable first read, uh, to this ordinance, we would ask for, uh, favorable second at this time.
Thank you, Charlie.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, a motion to approve the introduction and second reading of ordinance to amend Chapter twenty-six, Section twenty-nine of the TK Code of Laws in regards to towing regulations.
I have a motion by Jennifer Stalfer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris Lambic Larson. Any discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor, single or saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Um, item number five B on the agenda is a resolution adopting a low-hazard cross-contamination policy. City Manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, per SCDHEC regulations, um, the city is required to adopt a, um, a, uh, low-hazard cross-connection policy. Uh, we have a, uh, policy before you this evening, and, uh, would request council's favorable consideration at this time.
Thank you, Charlie. Council entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor and council, I motion to approve the resolution adopting a low-hazard cross-connection policy.
I have a motion by Ron Kirby. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris Lambic Larson. Any council discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Jen.
Uh, Section ten, item number one. I'd like for us to consider removing the last sentence in the paragraph. That would require it to be changed out, if it is five years old. I understand that you explained that that's usually the typical lifespan. However, if we're requiring people to have this tested and repaired on an annual basis, and let's say it lasts more than five years, I can't see why we would require someone to replace it, if it's still working.
I agree.
So, I think the, the last sentence could be struck.
I'm, I'm not sure what section you're on, is I trying to find it, um...
Section ten.
Since I'm just now hearing this.
First paragraph.
Section ten?
Yeah. I brought it up last time.
Section nine. Section ten. Last paragraph. Five. That's what council wants to do.
I agree with her wholeheartedly.
Okay.
Well, does that...
Are there any other questions or deletions to that?
We still go forward with that, Charlie, then? Or we gotta go backwards? We can, we can go forward.
We can change that. It's just, this is, no, it's a resolution, it's the only read. We can, we can change it before, uh, if you want to...
She wants to strike it, but what do you wanna change it to? Just strike it?
That's fine. That's what you wanna do.
So, with the resolution, we only have to have one reading, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, we...
Before we publish this, we would delete that sentence, if that's what council wants to do.
My only other concern is, because the deadline has already passed of June first, would there be some sort of extension for folks, or now we're already talking about two thousand sixteen being the compliance date?
June first is our deadline. It's only, it's only the city's deadline, and we can, staff can move that deadline as, as we need to.
Okay.
What date do you think is, uh...
I'm comfortable with the June first date. I'm thinking about TCUD two. Residents who've never had to do this because of our previous water supplier, and for those who do not have a backup flow preventer, or backflow preventer, they will now have to have one installed, and now that we've clarified what type of unit that would be required, this is not, we've already passed the deadline, not only for having it inspected to make sure it is working, but also for those who do not have one. And that is typical with the very old systems in TCUD two, section of TK.
Okay, so my question, what date are you comfortable with? I, I realize that we've passed June first.
Mm-hmm.
You know, is it, is there something that we wanna put a goal out there, August first?
I think, I think yes, a deadline would be great, even if it was just one or two months. Um, I, I'm just throwing anything out there. I'm just saying they're already in...
Why don't we leave to June first, and staff will just work with those customers, um, to, to try to bring them into compliance as soon as possible? Instead of changing the entire thing and changing a date that, you know, next year won't be an issue, we'll work with the TCUD two customers going forward, from the staff level. And then you don't have to change the document.
Right.
Well, we're changing the document anyway, cause we have to delete that line item anyway. So, the only reason why I'm saying is give, give, an August first date means that it will be fairly distributed amongst everybody, that nobody can say that, you know, hey, I spoke to blah, 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 and they gave me thirty days. Let's, let's...
There's no way everyone's, no one's gonna do it by August first.
Okay, so then what's, what's...
Charlie, is year acceptable? I got a question.
But DHEC regulations are supposed to be in yesterday. So, I mean, whether you do August first, December first, or next Thursday, it's gonna...
How's staff gonna react to it? Are they gonna, we gonna give them a six months? We gonna give them a year?
I mean, you're talking about the public, the public drinking supply. It, it needs to be in now. It should have been in from...
So, let's leave, we could leave the June first, and then you could be a little lenient.
We'll work with, we'll work with them to encourage that installation.
So, we need a June first to stay compliant with DHEC.
June first was the date that we set, so that we would have time to process everything to be in, be, have everything ready in time for our annual, um, report with DHEC.
Jen, I'm okay with staying with the June first, with the understanding being stated here, that the city manager says we're gonna work with, as need, because if I'm understanding correctly, that we need that stated in our resolution, so that it...
Hey, uh, although, let me note that, uh, the urgency, city manager? I've been drinking that water for twenty years right now.
Yeah, it's good.
Still here. Okay, so, it's not like we're, oh my God, you know?
Yeah.
So...
Don't need to scare anybody.
We're being in compliance, yeah, I get it, but, uh...
We're being forced to comply with something that's questionable.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, it's fine, but you'll, you'll be lenient, though, right? Your staff will be lenient, so I'm cool with that. Jen? You good?
With the understanding that there is some sort of leniency, otherwise, yeah. Not everyone's gonna be able to afford to get this installed if they do not have one right now. Not everybody has twelve hundred dollars to be able to spend on getting a backflow preventer stuck in their yard. So, it could take somebody a couple months to save up money to get one installed. That's how much I was quoted for mine, cause I don't have one.
Really? I thought we were talking about three hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
What, all right, now I'm getting concerned, what's the twelve hundred dollars? That's you and George are talking about?
The backflow preventer?
I've not gotten a quote on one, but, I mean, yeah, backflow prevention device, um, that probably is, that sounds about accurate, but you can get a, you can get just a residential dual-check valve installed as well for a couple hundred bucks.
So, okay, and I know you know this, Charlie, if, if they're not extremely lenient, George, I respect your concern of the variables here with different people, cause I'm gonna want leniency. I'd say that right now, too, but if we don't do it, or, how are we gonna do it, cause it's gonna end up back at council with complaints coming in? We're gonna be having the same conversation again.
It's no different than anyone else passing a law with no, no, no teeth to it. And by us not saying that it has to be done by a certain time, there's no teeth to it.
I agree.
So, anybody can come along and say, well, and, and you, we all hear this, so-and-so told me I don't need to do it today. So-and-so told me I had a year to do it. Well, who's so-and-so? Well, I don't know, I don't remember that.
They're probably gonna do it when they get caught or inspected.
Correct.
You know, so, I get that, yeah.
So, I, I think, I think putting a, a deadline in there, and, and if we put down June first of two thousand sixteen, I don't care, but just so long as there's a date in there that it has to be done.
I think you gotta give them a year.
Can, can the date be a part of your resolution instead of part of the actual manual, the policy?
Sure. Cause we have to change the motion anyway. That's fine.
But let's make it June first, two thousand sixteen, so it's a standard.
You have a problem with that, Jen?
Uh, how, how are we doing with the compliant, being compliant with DHEC, though, with that? If we date that? Let's go back to that.
TCUD one looks pretty good.
How many residents have come forth?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. We're not talking about TCUD one. Correct. We're talking about TCUD two.
Mm-hmm.
We got presented this thing last meeting.
Right.
And it's being jammed in us right now. If we're not in compliance, or we're trying to get in compliance, what do we have to do to do that? But we also have to worry about, how long are we gonna give the people to do this?
For, for DHEC's purposes to be in compliance, we have to have a policy that has been approved by the elected body. That's what DHEC need... They will be here in August. So, we've gotta have this policy approved.
So, if I'm understanding you correctly, you need a policy that is approved by council?
That is correct.
Period, end of story.
That is correct.
Okay. So, we set the policy.
And you're asking to stay trusted.
So, we're, we're setting the policy. You just need the policy approved.
I need the policy approved.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Chris, would you move your second, please?
I remove my second for the backflow prevention thing, whatever it is. Hold on.
Ron, would you remove your first?
I remove my first.
Counsel, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution adopting the low-hazard cross-contamination policy, with the deletion of Section ten, Paragraph one, the last sentence, this device must be replaced every five years, and also to change the date to June of two thousand sixteen.
I'll second that.
My motion, we have a second by Ron Kirby. Any further discussion with council? There being none, call the question. All in favor, single or saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Um, item number six A on the agenda is new business, the Planning Commission recommendation. Um, Tom Weir, Susan Britt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. The Planning Commission had a special, uh, meeting, uh, earlier this evening, voted to recommend approval of the, uh, rezoning district for this particular property to residential patio home.
In that recommendation, did they say how many patio homes?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item number six B on the agenda is the, um, introduction of the first reading of an ordinance to amend by a hundred percent petition method. Uh, City Manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, before you tonight is an ordinance, uh, introduction and first reading of an ordinance, uh, to annex by, uh, one hundred percent petition method. Um, the, uh, property that is approximately thirteen point seven one six acres, tax map number six five zero dash zero one dash zero one dash zero zero one. Um, there is a, uh, there was an error in, uh, the document that was in your packets, um, just in the title. Uh, I'm not sure how this happened, but it was to rezone as P U D R six. It's actually, as was stated several times, um, already this evening, it's, uh, R P H.
Um, this may have been, uh, hold over from a, um, previous discussion on this property, but it is to rezone as R P H. Um, the concept plan that has been presented, um, is merely that, just a concept plan. Um, at this time, we would ask for council's favorable consideration.
Counsel, make a motion to approve the introduction of the first reading of an ordinance to annex by one hundred percent petition method and incorporate within the corporate limits of the city of TK, that area owned by.
Synacor.
Synacor Builder LLC, approximately thirteen point seven one six acres, tax map number six five zero dash zero one dash zero one dash zero zero one, to rezone the property from P D in the county to R P H in the city, and to delete the concept plan from the first paragraph, and the patio homes not to exceed forty-five.
Second.
That's my motion. I have a motion by, um, Ron, second by, um, Ron Kirby. Any council discussion? We need this. This is something that, that the community has been asking for, um, it's something that there's not enough of, so I think this is a smart thing for us to be doing right now. Um, I realize that everybody's screaming about the growth, and screaming about the homes, and screaming about this. Um, I think having it as, what we, what we've decided to do with it, um, is a lot better than the county's idea of having a hundred townhomes in there. So, we're better off the way we are. Um, I think this is something that we need, um, and I'm, and I'm really glad that we're doing it. Um, call the question. All in favor, sing we're saying aye.
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 Unanimous. Item number 6C on the agenda is the introduction of the first reading of an ordinance to amend 471 regarding the TCUD budget. City manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, as stated during the, um, uh, public hearing earlier this evening, um, the city of TK has received no, uh, proper notification from Town of Fort Mill and City of Rock Hill of, uh, rate increases both to the water usage fee as well as the sewer usage fee. Um, this only affects TCUD 1 customers, uh, and the only amendment to the fiscal year budget of fourteen fifteen is just to the fee schedule only. Um, it would take the usage rate on water from four fifty-two per thousand gallons to four fifty-seven per thousand gallons, and on sewer from four fifty-two per thousand gallons to four seventy-nine, uh, per one thousand gallons. And at this time, I would ask for council's favorable consideration.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend ordinance 471 regarding the FY two four, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen TCUD budget.
Motion by Chris Lambic Larson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ron Kirby. Any discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor, sing we're saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number 6D on the agenda is a resolution authorizing the purchase of public works equipment. City manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, this evening is required by our lending institutions, as council is aware. Um, we have to, uh, obtain a resolution from council to enter into a lease purchase agreement, um, following city's procurement, um, practices. Uh, the bids for the lending, uh, were put out, uh, to the, uh, to our lending institutions. BBNT was the low bidder. Um, the, uh, piece of equipment that is being purchased is being purchased through, uh, state contract. Um, it is, and I really hope, uh, our folks that really love the trees don't take this the wrong way, but it is called a forestry cutter. Um, but it's, it's really more of a, uh, we'll call it a, a bush hog grinder type apparatus.
Something like.
That, it, it, it will basically help us keep our, our right of ways and, and easements clear. Um, it's not for, um, cutting down the entire forest by any stretch of imagination. Um, this was a piece of equipment that, um, we did inform council about, uh, during our, uh, budget planning for fifteen sixteen, or, excuse me, fourteen fifteen, and we would ask for council's favorable consideration at this time.
Council entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the purchase of public works equipment in the form of an equipment lease purchase agreement not to exceed twenty-eight thousand dollars.
I have a motion by Chris Lambic Larson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ron Kirby. Any discussion?
How long do these typically last, Charlie? Since it's a good-sized truck?
With good preventative maintenance, uh, probably anywhere between ten and fifteen years, we'll get out of it.
Okay.
Any other council discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor, sing we're saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number 6F on the agenda is, excuse me, 6E, uh, landscape easement, uh, agreement. City manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, resident, um, new owner actually, of, uh, forty-one thirty-two Koala Circle, this is a new construction, and this is the part of Koala Circle off the left side of Marquesas, um, not off of the side that goes around Koala Park, if that makes sense. So, if you're going down Marquesas Avenue, as Koala Circle comes back across.
Closer to the golf course.
Correct. On, on the, um, it, it actually overlooks wastewater treatment plant number two. Um, the resident has come to us and requested a landscape easement, uh, for them to do some landscaping to help block a little bit of their view from the brand-new deck of the, of the treatment plant. Uh, again, it's landscaping only. It's consistent with what we have allowed, uh, folks to do throughout the city, um, and we're, uh, requesting council's favorable approval at this time.
Charlie, I'm sorry, does this landscape agreement follow the house?
Yes, it does.
So that, when the guy who's currently owning the house decides to sell it, this easement follows the house, they have to maintain it?
That's correct.
How does that get communicated to the person purchasing the house?
It'll be, it'll be part of their deed.
Okay.
Or on the plot.
It'll be filed in the public record. Okay. Someone's doing a ti- title search, uh, it'll pop up. Okay, perfect.
Mr. Mayor and council, I'd like to motion that we approve, uh, the recommendation, city manager, the landscape easement agreement for forty-one thirty-two Koala Circle.
I have a motion by Ron Kirby.
Second.
Second by Chris Lambic Larson. Any discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor, sing we're saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Item number 6F, we tabled, so now we go over to item number 6G, which is the detention of juveniles. City manager Charlie Fundenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, uh, and members of council, this is a annual agreement. Uh, y'all probably recall seeing it last year. Uh, Department of Juvenile Justice, uh, requires us to enter into this memorandum of agreement. Um, should our, um, any of our juveniles have to be detained, um, only DJJ, Department of Juvenile Justice can do that. It's a fifty dollar a day thing. Um, we give them a purchase order, um, for, uh, not to exceed two thousand dollars. I think last year, we may have spent a hundred and fifty bucks maybe on it, so, uh, it's not something that we really get into a whole lot of, but, um, obviously, we need it just in case, so, uh, would ask for council's favorable approval at this time.
Mr. Mayor and council, I motion to approve, to approve the memorandum of agreement for the detention of juveniles.
Motion by Ron Kirby, do I have a second? Can, can we redo that?
Do you wanna re, re?
Let me retract.
Can we redo that, please?
Let me retract that.
You want it here, man?
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, just do it. My boy, I'm losing my voice.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of the agreement with the Department of the Juvenile Justice for the detention of juveniles.
Motion by Chris Lambic Larson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jennifer Stalford. Any, uh, council discussion? Didn't we just do this?
We do it every year.
Twelve months ago.
As required.
It seems like it was yesterday.
Yes.
Say aye.
Time flies when we're having fun.
Call the question. All in favor, sing we're saying aye.
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 But, Mr. Mayor, it sounds different each time you say it.
I know, I know, I know, I know, I know, I know. So long as my name's out there. Um, item number seven, city managers report.
A couple of things to, uh, run through, um, I'll try to be as, as quick as I can. Um, give council an update on ordinance seventy-seven amendments. Um, Susan and, um, Katie and Sylvia have been working very hard, and I definitely appreciate their efforts, uh, as well as the, uh, members of the planning commission with their input. Um, right now, we're envisioning, uh, public hearing and, uh, proposed first read, uh, at your September regular meeting, with a second read in October, uh, beginning, uh, later this week. We're gonna start placing those items that, um, we've already pushed over to planning commission and gotten comment. Gonna start putting those in Dropbox, uh, so that council has plenty of time to start looking at it and sending comments back to us and things like that, well before we get to that public hearing timeframe. Um, and we'll start that up, uh, later on this week, um, so that y'all have got, obviously, we're not gonna just put one at a time. There'll be a, a pretty good push into, into Dropbox later this week, um, and Sylvia will send you a notification once we put it in there. That, that way you can start, uh, reviewing those sections that we're looking to amend, um, and send us comments back. Um, second concert is this Saturday, um, June twentieth with the Cory Smythe Band. I think it's like a country-type band out at Rundy Park. Had a great attendance at, at the first one. Um, hopefully, it cools off a little bit between now and Saturday, and we'll have, um, another good showing, um, this coming weekend. This past Friday, uh, we had a CIP kickoff meeting, um, with Catawba Cog. Um, we're giving ourselves a, a pretty tight timeline, but we feel, feel pretty comfortable with it, um, to have a, uh, public hearing scheduled for October. Um, a, a public hearing is required for this, um, but as we progress through, I'd like to set up a, uh, a workshop with council, uh, probably sometime early September, um, so that council has, uh, a good time to look at it, comment on it, um, give feedback to it, make tweaks and changes to it before we move forward with, uh, public hearing and, and hopeful adoption. Um, budget calendar, um, looking at, at, um, what we've got with staff as well as notification timings, uh, for public hearings and things like that. Would like to be able to do, and, um, Mr. Kirby, I know this is gonna be difficult for you, but need to do the budget workshop on July thirtieth. Uh, it's a Thursday. I know, end of the year's tough.
End of month, yeah.
Yeah, or, excuse me, end of the month, uh, is tough with your schedule, but, um, do I, it is a Thursday night.
I'll be here.
Okay. Um, would like to be able to schedule that, um, you know, for, you know, six or six-thirty timeframe. Um, open to council as far as the timing, um, but we'll send an email out, um, unless council wants to decide now what time you want to start.
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty.
Seven would be wonderful, but.
You don't work at Thursdays.
Yeah, I am. End of the month.
Seven o'clock.
Seven?
Seven o'clock on the thirtieth.
Okay.
Thank you, I'll, I'll be here.
Thank you.
For, for Ron, the rest was get her at six-thirty and figure it all out.
So, you're gonna have it done and tell me you've only got through that part.
Right.
Um, just a reminder for, uh, folks viewing at home, uh, July fourth, land parade and boat parade, signups online now. Um, so get your, um, get your registrations in, you can go through the city's website, um, and fill that out. Uh, looking forward to a lot of participants in both the land parade and the boat parade for this year. Uh, it'll be here before we know it. Um, council, I did notify you guys, uh, but want to make sure, um, just for the general public, uh, DNR, uh, has sent us a notification that they will not be installing any additional no-wake buoys. Um, they have completed their study, um, and they did extend the no-wake area around Niven's Creek, uh, boat landing, as council is aware, um, and this week, they finally reinstalled the marker at the sandbar back in the, uh, back of Torrance Creek, um, so that boats would stop running aground there, so.
Can I make a comment about that, or should I wait till council comment?
Sure.
Uh, it's, it's, uh, it's not right.
What's that?
They, uh, the sandbar's here.
Right.
They put one here, and they put one here. And.
Okay.
I was out there, you know, a couple of times.
Right.
I know where the sandbar is.
Right.
If you put one in the middle, obviously, that's where you wouldn't go. It almost looks as if you'd say, hey, you know what? I'm gonna split those two, and you're gonna go right over to sandbar.
I will mention that to, uh, Chief Parker and ask him to have a conversation with DNR.
It's just really deceiving.
Okay. Okay. I will mention that to Steve Parker and have him talk to DNR.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Um, our ISO inspection for the fire department is scheduled for this Thursday. Um, looks, um, based on the comments that they have made to Chief Samansky, looks like we're in pretty good shape and should, um, either stay at a three or potentially move up to a two. Um, once we've got that final information, everything, obviously, we'll, um, we'll push that and, um, out to council and share it. Um, also, last week, the state accreditation folks, uh, did a walkthrough at the police department, uh, and were very complimentary. Still have some of their standard, uh, operating procedures and general orders they need to polish up, um, but it looks like they're on track for, um, state accreditation by this fall. Um, so, moving right along through that. Um, I'm not sure if council is aware of this or not, but Governor Haley, uh, did sign, um, Senate Bill forty-seven into law last week, uh, in regards to body worn cameras for law enforcement. Um, we, uh, myself and Chief Parker have been keeping a close eye on this process. Um, the state, um, the senate put aside three point four million in the fifteen sixteen budget, um, but, uh, if you've been following the general assembly, right now, they haven't passed a budget, and doesn't look like they're gonna get it done before June thirtieth. Um, with that law, um, we are not required to be in a hundred percent compliance until we've received a hundred percent funding. So, as we make application, and they give us some money if it doesn't outfit everybody, and that's for cameras as well as storage. So, um, we'll obviously, once, once the funding is available, we'll be making application for that and following through, but, um, it's, it's something on the books. Um, I don't know how, how much teeth it really has as of yet. Um, they are, uh, basically putting it out there for a year and gonna study it and tweak it, uh, is what we're being told. So, uh, we do have that to look forward to. Uh, and last, um, but certainly not least, uh, I was notified late this afternoon from, um, our, uh, garbage and recycle provider, we're having an issue with recycling. Um, for a number of years, they were taken to the Sunoco Recycling Center. Sunoco kicked us out, uh, a couple of months ago because too much trash was coming in the recycles. People are putting yard debris in the recycle bins, they're putting construction debris in their recycle bins, they're throwing food waste in there. Uh, Sunoco said enough's enough, you can't come back. Uh, they've been going to Pratt, uh, Recycling Center, um, and are experiencing the same. Uh, we're gonna be pushing out a lot of public notice, um, here over, uh, the next several weeks, uh, as to what can be in the recycle bin and what can't. But if this continues from our residents, uh, we will not have any place to take recyclables, and therefore, we will have to stop curbside recycling pickup, and folks will have to take it down to the Baxter Convenience Center. Um, that is not something that I think any of us want, but the fact that we've already been bounced from one very large recycling transfer station because of lumber and grass clippings and bran, tree branches and things like that, um, and are about to get bounced from the second one, um, and it's all coming out of, uh, TK, out of the signature waste trucks after they pick up both on the peninsula and off the peninsula.
Charlie, can, can you make a note as well to add to your comments to the, you know, the information you're gonna pass around? Most of those garbage cans that are out that I see are not marked recycled. They're, the guy that's picking them up, they, people have two garbage cans out.
Right.
One has got that orange sticker on it, and that's identifiably for recycled.
Mm-hmm.
There's other ones sitting right there, or two that are your everyday waste.
Right.
Maybe their driver's gonna have to be a little bit more stringent on that as well, just to make a note of that.
Yep, absolutely will.
Yeah, 'cause I, I, I see it all the time.
Mine didn't have an orange stripe. I went down to City Hall and got me a sticker.
Doesn't it have a sticker on the top?
Yeah, it's got a white sticker that, by this point in time, is probably faded. I know the one at my house is.
Yeah, maybe we need to redo, redo them as well.
They may have to change out some of the lids, but we are gonna be pushing heavily on the public notification and education on this. Again, I just received this notification probably around four o'clock this afternoon, Again, I just received this notification probably around four o'clock this afternoon after Signature Waste finished meeting with the officials at, at the Pratt Recycling Transfer Station. So, with that, that concludes my City Manager's report for this evening.
Would that include putting like a notice on every bin since not everybody has computer access? And so few, I think you only said maybe six hundred are signed up for the e-alerts that you send out?
We're going to be pushing Facebook, Channel one fifteen, news and announcements, things of that nature. We can do a mailer, Signature Waste, putting stickers on, on every can. I don't know we'll get a whole lot of bang for the buck, but we'll, we'll be, we'll exhaust as many avenues as we possibly can.
I'd be glad to work with the group to volunteer to put stickers on myself just so we don't get caught and not have to recycle. I mean, some volunteers to go out and, or they put it in, put it in their paper box or something. As opposed to doing a mailing. I'm not sure the mailing, they look at it and think it's.
Right.
You know, it's.
Understood, yeah.
They know which ones are fine and which ones are bill and which ones.
In other cities, I'm, I'm not suggesting this, but it could be an option for us to, instead of us dropping the program, if we still don't get people into compliance to a certain threshold, I know other cities, people get fined if they put crap in there instead of recyclables.
At this point, I don't have the staff to inspect the recycle cans and I don't know, well, and it's not in the signature waste contract for them to bring out extra employees to pop lids and, and look. Yeah, City of Rock Hill, I, I mean, obviously, they use the Kirby's and they're still emptying them by hand, so it's easier for that operator to see what's going in and what's not, making sure. I mean, they basically sort it at the curb as they're, whereas ours is able to be all co-mingled and all that good stuff, so. But we're going to, we're going to continue to work with Signature Waste on, on coming up with a, a plan of action.
Just have to recycle. You don't want to recycle, just put all the garbage in, in one can, have it picked up. Whenever it gets picked up, that's fine. That's your choice, not to recycle. But if you're going to recycle, do it the proper way.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Any other can, any, anything else? Because you said you only had four and I counted seven.
I'm done. I didn't say four. I said it would be quick.
I was, Charlie, I really appreciate the update regarding the ordinance that you guys are working on. When you, I know you're going to be sending it out to us, is it possible if it could be redlined when you put it, the packet together? Because that's something I've heard from a lot of residents. They're like, that's just so much to read. Can you show us what the changes would be?
Well, we put it together for, for the public hearing, since the entire document's not being changed. If it's an existing section that we're changing, we'll make sure, at least for first read in the public hearing, that it is redlined so folks will know the changes and then we'll go with a clean copy for the, for the final read. Yes, ma'am?
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, are you doing council comments or we got public comments first? Just following your agenda, sorry.
Say, look, Dottie's not here and you're going to crack the whip.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Item number eight on the agenda, public comments. Are there any public comments? Since there's no public, we'll move on to item number eight, which are council comments. Ron?
Item nine.
Nine, correct. Thank you.
You're welcome. First of all, please remember my daughters Jacqueline and Lauren and their travels. Didn't want to put that in this moment of silence there in Israel on their ninth day and have five more days to go. I know God's taking care of them, but I would be a lying parent if I said I wasn't a little on edge, you know, since all the things are going on, but they're having.
So, put Ron in your prayers too.
Yeah, that's right. Number two, I want to thank everybody, the citizens that came together, the city staff support. And when I say support, I mean in, in mental and moral support, casual water, Josh and his staff. We just, we had the first annual Les Connor Memorial Wormburner Classic Friday. And it, it was, George was there and saw the crowd after the golf. It was phenomenal what would happen the first time. It's very exciting. Very, very proud to be a part of TK and see the support come out for a good man that did a lot for the city. Retreat. I know, I know we got into a little, there were some mixed emotions the last time that the mayor tried to put together retreat. Can we, is there any chance of doing one sooner or splitting it up and doing your suggestion that we get in the golf cart and ride around and look? There's a lot of things to see. And, and maybe make your notes and then do the meeting at another time or is that, can we?
Sure.
Do something sooner. Hey, croquet, I'd, I'd rather play at ninety-five degrees than I had, you know, I'm not going to wear my white shorts in the winter.
Can Charlie and I have a conversation and then, and then we'll push something out to you guys as far as dates and stuff like that?
I would appreciate it.
All right.
I think it's important. Again, there's just a lot of things to see.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, the, the chief sent me something about the buoys and he said that they finally got to Torrance Creek and a couple of residents that sent me a note, "Thank you." But I haven't been out there. I know you, you've been out on your boat and it is dangerous. If you don't know something about the lake, it's, it's, it's very dangerous. Landscape around the city, Charlie, we, I know that you said that Tim had put together something, a plan of action. How's that coming?
I think it's moving along quite well. They've done several of the entryways on TK Drive. Work began today and actually, I believe, was completed out in front of City Hall with the irrigation. All that landscaping is supposed to be going in Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. They've expanded the flowerbed out in, as soon as the median starts. Having some issues with some of the rose bushes that we planted up on the hill by City Hall. Ground just wasn't percolating right and from what I've told, roses don't like wet feet, so. But the lower pedaling seem to be okay. Some of the roses are all right and we may have to replace some of those. Got some work going in at, at Anchorage. And I know we've got a tree contractor replacing some of the dead trees in the median that were still under warranty. There's one there by White Bluff and one further down just beyond Heron Harbor that we're struggling, but everything else is, is moving lighter, moving right along, looking pretty good.
Okay, I'd still like to meet with you and go over, go ride around, look at some of this stuff if you don't mind. Looking without going into details, I'm looking at the development and there's some things that aren't taking place at this point that, that were important when we put, approved the plan. And I'm not trying to get in that conversation. I just, if, if there's a berm required in our development agreement, does that go in after construction?
No, so you're, you're referring to Cameron Creek?
Yeah.
They had to install the main water line that came through right where that berm is. That line is now installed. The houses that are backing up to one sixty, once they get to a certain point in their construction, I actually just heard from the developer Thursday of last week, they're going to begin putting that, getting that berm installed and landscaped and the irrigation and everything in. But they didn't want to put the irrigation in for it until after they got the houses to a certain point in their construction so they weren't tearing through it. So, that berm should be up, I would imagine, in the next couple of weeks.
That makes me feel better because George and I had this conversation a while back. Not a lot of people saying a lot, but a few are saying something, why couldn't we have our, our new development looking like the other one, you know, and beautified? So, I got an answer for them. It's part of the process. That's all I got.
Chris?
Hey, I'm going to go out of my wheelhouse on this one, Charlie. A quick question. When somebody hits a tree in our median coming in, and what do we got, crepes and brad birds and what? I know we don't, do we have a spare one laying around anywhere?
No, generally, what we do is, we file it against their insurance. It's written up as part of the accident report.
The reason, my next part is, is it, is it stupid to plant a few of the spare ones laying around so, so we could just? Because when, when it's gone, it's gone. Now, we got to wait for the new one to grow. And I've seen a couple that, you know.
We try to put in sizable ones, but we can't put in too big a one because of the, the hole that's required for it. You've got utilities and everything under there. You'd be digging right through them. So, we've got to, basically, we put in as big a one as we can based on the, the tree size.
And we buy them like that, already grown, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I got.
Thank you, Chris. Jen?
Just one thing. In the Living Memorial Gardens on Saturday, beautification committee will dedicate the new Little Free Library. And thanks to the Women's Club of TK, they made the donation make that possible and then we had volunteers construct it and install it. And if you'd like to donate books for any age, it's a free exchange program. You can contact Michelle McGuire or you can send a message through the Living Memorial Gardens Facebook page and I will connect you with the right person.
Thank you, Jen.
Mr. Mayor, one last thing, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Danny Pepez and.
All right, cross that off my list.
Oh, go ahead.
Before I, before I bring up Danny Pepez, could you, could Tim please come out of his cubbyhole? Tim, I got an email on June fifth at ten fifty-six. George, I have to tell you how excited I was to see the meeting at the Glenon Center Planted. It is our prime showcase. Please pass along my praise to whoever, whoever made that decision. Also, I must say the crosswalks continue to look sharp. Nice touch. Thank you, Tim. You're the one that makes sure that this stuff happens. We appreciate it. Thank you. And then lastly, yesterday, Saturday, TK Lions Club named the lion of the year, who was Danny Pepez for the city of TK, which is a great honor and it, it went well deserved to Danny and I'm, I'm proud to know Danny and I'm sure all of us are and we're very proud of the fact that he, he received that award. Other than that, I have no other council comments. We do not need an executive session, correct? So, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second. I, I made the motion. Chris seconded the motion.
We're adjourned. Thank you.